It was like anywhere between 103 and 108, mainly 105. It was like, oh, come on.
Okay, we are on the air, so I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Board meeting for September 16th to order. And welcome to the City of Treasure Island Planning and Zoning Board meeting. If you wish to speak on a topic which is on today's agenda, a speaker's card is available on the table over in that direction toward the entrance and must be completed and given to the chairperson. Please do not address the board from your seat, but rather from the podium where your comments can be heard by all and recorded as required by Florida statute. Unscheduled topics may be presented under the public comments section of the agenda. If we could, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, if everybody would please silence their cell phones so we don't get interrupted during the meeting. Ruth, if you could administer the oath to the folks that are going to speak at today's meeting.
Is there anybody here that plans to speak publicly at this meeting? Would you please stand? One, two, three, four public speakers. Thank you. With your right hands raised, do you affirm that the statements you will give today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, roll call. We first off want to thank Rick Krebs for his six years of service. And we currently don't have a chair, so we'll get to that shortly. But Ruth, if you could start off with a roll call.
Pam Berengasio. Diana Crable.
Here.
Linda Driscoll.
Here.
Lynn Fisher.
Here.
Ross Sanchez.
Here.
Richard Harris.
Here.
And Mr. Downing, whom we haven't sworn in yet, but will.
Here.
Thank you.
And welcome to Christopher Downing. He is our new alternate, taking the place of who?
Mr. Anderson.
Oh, he resigned?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And you will vote today, sir, as Ms. Berengasio's absent.
Okay.
All right, one of the things that has occurred is Rick Krebs, our former chairman, termed out last meeting, so we need to elect officers, chairman and vice chair. I have been chair in the past, and I'll be happy to be chair again. But if we could have nominations for both, well, let's go do the chairman first. Could have nominations for chairman.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Richard Harris for chair.
I second.
Do I need to provide details on why, or?
No. Mr. Harris, do you accept that nomination?
Sure.
Should I take a roll on that?
And can we just have a verbal vote on that? Okay, let's have a roll call then, Ruth.
I'm going to just skip Pam for the rest of these because she's not here today. So Diana Crable.
Aye.
Linda Driscoll.
Yes.
Lynn Fisher.
Yes.
Ross Sanchez.
Yes.
Christopher Downing. You can't vote yet, Mr. Harris.
I guess I will for myself, yes. Okay, thank you very much for your continued confidence in me. And if we could have a nomination for vice chair, any volunteer or any nomination?
I nominate Ross Sanchez.
Okay, I'll second that. Anyone else? Okay, we'll have a roll call on that one then, Ruth.
Diana Crable.
Aye.
Linda Driscoll.
Yes.
Lynn Fisher.
Yes.
Richard Harris.
Yes.
Ross Sanchez.
Yes, without being selfish.
Thank you.
We didn't ask you if you were okay with that, so you're drafted. Okay, if anybody has any ex parte communication in regard to any of the cases?
I'm sorry, before we move on, can we go ahead and swear in our newest member?
Certainly.
Mr. Downing, if you just please stand.
Sure.
And raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christopher Downing.
I, Christopher Downing.
A citizen of the state of Florida and of the United States of America.
A citizen of the state of Florida and the United States of America.
And being appointed as a member.
And being appointed as a member.
Of the planning, as an alternate member, of the Planning and Zoning Board and Local Planning Agency.
As an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Board and.
Local Planning Agency.
The Local Planning Agency.
Of the City of Treasure Island.
The City of Treasure Island.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
And Florida.
Perfect. Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, do Ross and I have to be sworn in as the chair and vice chair? Are we good to go?
I'm automatically appointed, and I'm going to switch your things around while I wait. What about the reappointment? The folks who were reappointed.
Oh, yes, thank you. That's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yes.
Ross was reappointed.
And I think, other than that, it was Heidi was reappointed.
She's not here.
And I think that's it. I think so, too.
I'm going to go back to the resolution.
Well, Heidi would stay as an alternate?
One second, please.
But alternates still have to be sworn.
Okay.
So now Ms. Horick was an alternate, and now she's moving into?
Now, actually, we have a.
She's still an alternate.
A new member from Ale Capri who is unable to attend today.
Correct.
What is his name, by the way?
It's Michael, and it's H-U-R-T-U-B-I-S-E.
Well, we'll welcome him to the board in his absence when we'll see him next month.
Can I swear Ross in right now while he's trying to fix my system?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Sanchez, if you'd please stand. And after the meeting, I have a form I need you to sign.
Yeah.
Okay, if you'd raise your right hand. I, Ross Sanchez.
I, Ross Sanchez.
A citizen of the United, of the state of Florida and of the United States of America.
A citizen of the United States and a citizen of the state of Florida.
And being appointed as a member.
And being appointed as a member.
Of the Planning and Zoning Board and the Local Planning Agency.
Of the Planning and Zoning Board and Local Planning Agency.
Of the City of Treasure Island.
Of the City of Treasure Island.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida.
I support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your service.
Appreciate you, Ms. Ruth.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on. Any ex parte communication that needs to be disclosed on today's cases? Seeing none, we have some minutes, although the minutes were not in my packet.
Oh, really?
So, unless I missed them.
Well, you might not have, but they were online. Right, so what you can see here is if you had looked at it online, you could have clicked the link. But that just simply means I need to teach Jamie how to put those in there. I apologize.
Well, the packet.
Do you want to wait to vote on them until you can read them?
That would be good, I was just going to say.
So let's table that.
We'll table that until next meeting. Okay, status update of the prior planning and zoning cases. Kathy, is that something you want to go through, or do we need?
Yes. No, we don't have to wait. No, I have Jamie's chart. So what I did is I did a quick research on the projects. And the site plan modification for 8809,000 and 9,100 West Gulf Boulevard, the Caddy's one, they passed their electrical inspection on 9-2, and there are still other inspections that need to be called in and waiting for to finalize that project. The 9600 West Gulf Boulevard, they had a couple of inspections that passed, so they're moving along. And 11801 First Street East, their permit was issued. And so they're going through the steps to, you know, do construction, get inspected, and finalize their project. And as far as I could tell, there was nothing else that changed on the sheet.
I love you.
Okay, thank you. It'll be good to see Caddy's finally get some new bathrooms. Okay, we will move into our cases, starting out today with our first case, case number SPEC-000144-2021, a special exception use request to allow the construction of four multi-use private docks with eight boat lifts for a multifamily residential dwelling. I know that Terry is in the audience, and please present your case for the, these four docks. Eight boat lifts and four docks.
Yes, good afternoon. Terry Scapek with Woods Consulting, representing the Capri Landings Homeowners Association on this application. This is a special exception use to have multi-use docks. They have existing multi-use docks, but they are going to expand to have eight slips because they have eight units. And they're able to do so without having to request any variances. So side setbacks are being met, and the maximum widths have been applied, and we are not exceeding maximum length. So we are very pleased to be having a recommendation of approval on this. And we are completely in agreement with the conditions that have been stated, such that a site plan modification will be approved by the Planning and Zoning Board, which is our next case. The proposed docks and boat lifts shall be for the sole use of the residence of the dwelling units on the upland property. The boat lifts will not be used in association with any business or commercial venture. No fueling facilities will be established. There will be no livable boards on site. And the applicant will be required to obtain approvals or exemptions from Pinellas County, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. In addition to those permits, we will also be applying to the state for submerged land lease modification to make sure that all eight slips are approved. If there are any questions, I am available to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the board for the applicant? Seeing none, please have a seat, and we'll have the city presentation.
Thank you. This is a special exception use request to allow the construction of four multi-use private docks with eight boat lifts for a multifamily residential dwelling. The site location address is 11775, 11785, 11795, 11805, 11815, 11825, 11835, and 11855, Third Street East. This is for Capri Landing condos. The land use is residential medium, and the zoning is residential medium 15. The subject property is a waterfront parcel that abuts Boca Siega Bay on Capri Isle. There is an existing eight-unit multifamily residential dwelling known as Capri Landing condominiums on the parcel. There are three existing multi-use private docks on site. A multi-use private dock is a special exception use in the RM15 zoning district. There is currently no special exception use approved on file for the subject property. The applicant is requesting approval of a special exception use to allow the construction of four multi-use private dock structures with a total of eight boat lifts on the subject property. The existing dock and boat lift structures would be demolished. Per the city's land development regulations, a special exception use application is accompanied by a site plan modification application, which you will hear next. The applicant attended a July 27, 2021 pre-application conference at the DRC. The multi-use private dock is a special exception within this zoning district. The proposed special exception use is consistent with the residential medium land use category within the comprehensive plan. The special exception use to have multi-use private docks on site will be a recreational amenity to the property owners, renters, or guests of the condominiums. The marine structures will be reviewed under the site plan modification. Multi-use private docks are found throughout the city on many parcels of land abiding Boca Siega Bay. The proposed docks will be compatible with the surrounding development. The proposed docks will be consistent with the character and purpose of the RM15 zoning district. The proposed docks are located entirely above water and should not impact landscaping of the property. It must be noted that the slips on the site cannot be advertised or made available for lease to the general public. The proposed docks will be required to be approved by Pinellas County Water and Navigation, Florida DEP, and/or the Army Corps of Engineers during the permitting process. This will be a recreational use available solely for the residents of the upland property and their guests. Staff recommends a proposed special exception use to allow the construction of four multi-use private docks with eight boat lifts for a multiple-family residential dwelling be approved with the following conditions. One, a site plan modification must be approved by the Planning and Zoning Board. Two, the proposed docks and boat lifts shall be for the sole use of the residents of the dwelling units on the upland property. The proposed docks and boat lifts cannot be advertised or made available for lease to the general public. The proposed, number three, the proposed docks and boat lifts cannot be used or associated with any business or commercial venture. Four, no fueling facility can be established on site. Five, there shall be no livable boards on site. Six, the applicant will be required to obtain approvals or exemptions from Pinellas County Water and Nav, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and/or the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers during the permitting process. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody have any questions for the city staff in regard to this case? Seeing none, any comments from the audience? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. And does any member of the board have any comments, or can we entertain a motion for this project? And technically, I'm not supposed to make a motion as chairman, so one of you guys got to do it.
I'd make a motion to approve with conditions case number SPEC-000144-2021, a special exception use to allow the construction of four multi-use private docks and eight boat lifts as a multiple-family residential dwelling. Conditions, a site plan modification must be approved by the Planning and Zoning Board. The use of the proposed docks and boat lifts shall be the sole use of the residents of the dwelling units on the upland property. The proposed docks and boat lifts cannot be advertised or made available for lease to the general public. The proposed docks and boat lifts cannot be used or associated with any business or commercial venture. No fueling facility can be established on site. There shall be no livable boards on site. The applicant will be required to obtain approvals or exemptions from Pinellas County Water and Navigation, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers during the permitting process.
Thank you, Linda. Can I have a second, please?
A second.
Okay, motion by Linda Driscoll, second by Diana Crable. Ruth, could we have a roll call vote?
Diana Crable.
Aye.
Linda Driscoll.
Yes.
Lynn Fisher.
Yes.
Ross Sanchez.
Yes.
Christopher Downing.
Yes.
Richard Harris.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to the second case, which involves the same project. Case number SMOD-00145-2021, a site plan modification to allow the construction of four multi-use private docks with eight boat lifts for a multiple-family residential dwelling. Terry, if you would, approach the podium and make your case for this one.
Yes, hello, Terry Scapek again. This is a special, I'm sorry, the site plan modification. I guess it's a technicality with the special exception use. It must accompany a site plan modification. There is no site plan changes happening on the uplands. This is an existing eight-unit residential multifamily development. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that there are no changes being made to the uplands. These new docks, the four docks with the four boat lifts, are simply replacing the existing docks that are on site now. So that was the previous case. And we are appreciative of the staff recommendation of approval, and we agree to the following stated conditions. Number one, a special exception use must be approved by the Planning and Zoning Board, which it was, thank you. Number two, the proposed docks and boat lifts will be for the sole use of the residents and the dwelling units on the upland property, and cannot be advertised or made available for lease to the general public. The proposed docks and boat lifts will not be used or associated with any business or commercial venture. No fueling facilities will be established on site. There will be no livable boards on site. And the applicant will obtain approvals from Pinellas County Water and Navigation, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers during the permitting process, including the submerged land lease modification for the new dock configuration. And I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of the applicant from the board? Scapek, I did have one quick question, just a matter of interest. The actual upland eight-unit project, that's fairly new, isn't it? Do you recall what year it was built?
Oh, my gosh, 80s? Yeah, it was, yeah, it was in the early, very early 80s.
Oh, okay, so it's a lot older than I thought it was then. Get my projects mixed up. Thank you. Okay, Kathy, if you could, go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you. So just pretty much the same thing I read in the first special exception or now approved staff report is for this project also. So the description of this project is a site plan modification to allow the construction of four multi-use private docks with eight boat lifts for a multifamily residential dwelling. This is the same site location as the previous special exception we just heard. This is for Capri Landing condo association. The land use is residential medium with the zoning district a residential medium 15. The applicant is requesting approval of a site plan modification to allow the construction of four multi-use private dock structures with a total of eight boat lifts on the subject property. The existing dock and boat lift structures will, would be demolished. The remainder of the site will remain unchanged and as the upland part of the property. A multi-use private dock is a special exception use in the RM15 zoning district. The site plan modification accompanied a special exception use application as SPEC-000144-2021. And the applicant attended the July 27, 2021 pre-application conference at the DRC meeting. The future land use designation of the subject property is residential medium. The subject property is located in the RM15 zoning district. The proposed docks and boat lifts are in conformance with the Treasure Island Code of Ordinance of Section 69-91 Marine Structures. The proposed docks and boat lifts are compatible with the plan character of the RM15 zoning district and surrounding multifamily residential development. The proposed docks and boat lifts will not impact internal or external circulation pedestrian or pedestrian vehicle vehicular traffic. The proposed docks and boat lifts will not impact the upland trees or vegetation. The proposed docks will be located entirely above water. There will be no change to public waterfront access as a result of the proposed docks and boat lifts. The dockage is private, and no public accessways will be impacted. During the permitting process, the applicant will be required to obtain approval or exemption from Pinellas County Water and Nav, Florida DEP Protection, and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Staff recommends a proposed site plan modification to allow the construction of four multi-use private docks with eight boat lifts for a multifamily residential dwelling be approved with the following conditions. One, a special exception use must be approved by the Planning and Zoning Board. Two, the proposed docks and boat lifts shall be used for the sole use of the residents of the dwelling units on the upland property. The proposed docks and boat lifts cannot be advertised or made available for lease to the general public. Three, the proposed docks and boat lifts cannot be used or associated with any business or commercial venture. Four, no fueling facility can be established on site. Five, there shall be no livable boards on site. Six, the applicant will be required to obtain approvals or exemptions from Pinellas County Water and Navigation, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers during the permitting process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the city staff on this project? Seeing none, anyone in the, anyone in the crowd wishes to speak on this project? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any comments, or can we enter a motion to approve this project, subject to the six conditions?
Yeah, I motion to approve case number SMOD-000145-2021, a site plan modification to allow the construction of four multi-use private docks with eight boat lifts for a multifamily residential dwelling, with the conditions listed one through six in our packet.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ross Sanchez, second by Diana Crable. Ruth could have a roll call vote.
Diana Crable.
Aye.
Linda Driscoll.
Yes.
Lynn Fisher.
Yes.
Ross Sanchez.
Yes.
Christopher Downing.
Yes.
Richard Harris.
Yes.
Thank you.
I mean, now go build some docks upon getting all your other permits. Okay, we'll move on to our third case, case number SMOD-000147-2021, site plan modification to allow the construction of a covered patio for outdoor dining. And for the people who are not familiar with this address, this is Foxy's. So I just want to make that clear to everyone. Would the applicant please approach the podium and make their case?
Hello, I'm Greg from Foxy's. What we're trying to do is just get a little bit more seating for people who sit outside because it seems like where everyone wants to sit now. So actually, we're just extending the awning with seating that's already there and putting patio. We still have plenty of parking. We went through all that. So we're only taking up two spots and just extending the existing awning that's there just for, you know, people have more outside seating, basically.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, go ahead there, Kathy.
Thank you. This is a site plan modification to allow the construction of a covered patio for the proposed expansion of outdoor dining. And this is Foxy's, site located at 160107th Avenue. The land use is planned redevelopment mixed use, and the zoning is PRMU Core, and that's in the downtown redevelopment zoning district. The subject property consists of an existing one-story structure constructed in 1972. A majority of the restaurant's existing seating is located indoor. In 2012, a doggy dining application was applied for with permit number 2012-00620 and approved. The application showed a 60-foot-long patio dog area, eight tables, and 35 chairs. In 2013, a driveway parking lot permit, 2013-00065, was approved to restripe the parking lot at 15216172107th Avenue with the same size and number of handicap and regular parking spaces. The existing site plan in attached to the permit indicates 17 spaces where we striped in front of 16107th Avenue. Throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, the city temporarily relaxed outdoor dining regulations with city approval for restaurants, allowing them to utilize certain outdoor spaces for seating to better comply with social distancing regulations. Foxy received city approval for outdoor dining utilizing two parking spaces located in front of the restaurant. The governor of the state of Florida ended the state of emergency in May 2021, thus ending the city's temporary relaxation of business standards. The applicant is requesting the continued use of outdoor space for additional dining for use by its patrons. This actually requires site plan approval by the Planning and Zoning Board. The site plan modification includes the construction of a patio cover for a permanent outdoor dining area. The covered patio area is approximately 16 by 18, or a total of 288 square feet, which is two parking, nine by 18 parking spaces. That's nine feet by 18 feet parking spaces. The patio cover will be connected to the existing structure overhang. The patio, the proposed outdoor dining area includes removal of two existing parking spaces. The applicant attended the July 27 pre-application conference at the DRC meeting. The subject site is assigned the planned redevelopment mixed use future land use designation and is located in the PRMU Core Downtown Redevelopment Zoning District. The purpose of this district is to create an opportunity to revitalize the city's downtown core economically, visually, and functionally to provide an aesthetically pleasing and efficiently, efficient multi-use activity center. Outdoor dining is encouraged in this zoning district. The proposed site plan modification is in conformance with all applicable regulations of the PRMU Core zoning district. The proposed site plan modification does not involve the subdivision of property or design of construction of streets. The proposed site plan modification is not anticipated to cause reduction to the current, city's current level of service or. to the current, city's current level of service or any component of the city's public infrastructure. The proposed site plan modification is compatible with the planning character of the zoning district. The intent of the downtown redevelopment district is to create opportunity to revitalize the city's downtown core. The availability of outdoor seating allows the existing restaurant to provide additional service in aesthetically pleasing outdoor area. The proposed site plan modification includes a seating area with an existing parking lot. A condition of the site plan approval shall include the installation of bollards designed to resist a concentrated load of 6,000 pounds around the outdoor dining area in order to provide a protective barrier between the vehicular drive area and the outdoor dining area. The proposed site plan modification does not impact existing trees or other environmentally sensitive areas. It does not impact building arrangements. Staff recommends the proposed site plan modification be approved with the following conditions. All constructions associated with this project shall be subject to the Florida Building Code, City of Treasure Island Code of Ordinances, Flood Plane Management Regulations, the Fire Prevention Code and any other applicable regulations in effect at the time of permitting. Bollards designed to resist a concentrated load of 6,000 pounds shall be installed around the outdoor dining area in order to provide a protective barrier between the vehicular drive area and outdoor dining area. The applicant shall install signage in the parking area at the rear of the building to be cautious of pedestrians. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for the city staff?
I have one. Yes, Kathy? I just had a question with regard to the, the bollards and how the city staff looks at that with regard to any, the codes that are required for bollards like that. You've mentioned the 6,000 pound, but not the number of bollards or spacing. I didn't know what was applicable in this particular case. It appeared on the drawing that there's only bollard at each corner. I'm not familiar with what's required by the state of Florida for safety in that regard. And this is kind of a new thing in the air because of all of the outdoor dining that's happening.
Right.
And so, there may not be something already applicable.
So, I'm going to take an assumption here and assume that Jamie talked to our Florida building, our building official and talked about the safety of their customers in regards to where the bollards go. Also at the DRC meeting, I don't have my minutes with me. I can look them up to see if there was any mention of where the bollards will go. I can clarify that at a later time or we could talk about it when it comes through permitting process to make sure that Foxy's customers and anybody else sitting in that area is safe for cars.
Thank you, Kathy and vice chair. Perhaps we can just modify the language in here so that something is made applicable to what, whatever standard has to be met for these bollards in approving or disapproving.
Well, currently, the, one of the conditions is the site plans have to be consistent with the Florida Building Code. And that would fall under the Florida Building Code regulations.
So, that would be covered underneath item number one as, as condition number one, then.
I mean, just in reading number two, it just says the concentrated, the 6,000 shall be installed around the outdoor dining area in order to provide protective barrier between the vehicle drive area. So, I mean, around the area is what it says in number two. And I think some of the, the questions for the, I just want to make sure that the applicant doesn't have to put 20 bollards all the way around two parking spaces. I did have a question of the applicant. I wanted to make sure that they were aware of the conditions of the bollards going in. They, they were, I mean, obviously, if we approve that, they're going to be on board with putting those bollards in. Okay.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. And I mean, I think just side note for me is like, I mean, if this is what the applicant wants, like, I'm going to be on board for it because I want, want our Treasure Island businesses to get people, you know, in their seats and what's applicable for them, you know, to help generate revenues. I was interested to see the bollards. My, my only comment in regards to being the two spaces is on the space that is on the west side of the actual covered overhang. The pedestrian walkway was actually on the outside or to the, to the side of the parking spot. I was surprised that they didn't put the pedestrian walkway right next to the covered area. That was one thing that I saw that could actually provide additional cushion. But if, again, two spaces, that square footage is what the applicant is looking for, then, you know, I'm going to be on board with approving this.
And when he comes, comes in for permitting, maybe one of your conditions can be, you know, the safety of pedestrians or however you want to word it for the location of the bollards.
You know, the worst-case scenario would be three along the front. But I would say, you know, based on what I've run into in the past, two out at the front, one at each corner should suffice. And I was looking at what the city of St. Petersburg did on Central Avenue. And it's not too aesthetic. We don't really want that here in Treasure Island. So, I appreciate the fact of, that the city is saying just bollards. The city of, St. Petersburg actually used barrier walls, which is pretty hideous, to say the least.
They got a bunch laying around from the Grand Prix.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. Anyway.
Question, sorry, additional question for staff. Number three, applicant shall install signage in the parking area at the rear of the building. I think that that's, is that acceptable on how we want it worded?
Well, since we, so Jamie and I talked about that. And since that is a, a private parking lot, we can't tell them what to put up there. But if you look at the site plan, there is additional parking back there now that they're supposed, they're proposed to put in. And the way the parking lot is designed in the back is angled parking. And then, right next to that, there's a couple other parking spaces that you just pull in.
Okay.
So, if you just angle parking, you're going to have to back up. Well, then, these other people back up this way. And we just want to make sure that the two don't collide. Because there's no turnaround, so you have to pull in and then you have to pull back out.
Okay.
So, we just wanted to make sure that there was signage or something back there that says, be careful, there's behind you, you know, because there's additional parking back there besides the ones being proposed.
Are we allowed to ask the applicant? I know he's not at the mic right now, but can I, Greg, the applicant, Greg, can you go to the mic?
If you could.
Sorry. Are we allowed to ask him if this, with these conditions, like, he's aware of it? He's okay with it? There's not going to be any pushback for when he goes for permitting? Is that a question I'm allowed to ask? Is this everything that you're wanting?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, we already know about the additional parking in the back. And as far as the barriers is whatever the CDC says that we have to do for permitting, well, you know, if we have to put three in the front, then we will put three in the front. I mean.
Yep, just want to make sure it's what you're looking for.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, you're a longtime Treasure Island business owner. So, I just want to make sure when we say yes, we're.
Be safe, too. I mean, anybody can run through a car through anything, but you know what I mean? As long as, as they're there, it should be, should be safe.
Just want to make sure it's what you're looking for. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Anyone in the audience that wants to speak in regard to this case? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any further comments from the board or can we have a motion to approve this? One comment I would like to make is the virus obviously affected every business in this whole island very negatively. I really appreciated the fact that Foxy's was actually out there making it work, having their staff volunteer to wash cars for tips. And it just shows the effort that this business did go to stay in business. And I really appreciate that and the fact that this board especially should try to support its local businesses. So, thank you. With that, could I have a motion?
Yeah, I will motion to approve case number S M O D dash 000147 dash 2021, a site plan modification to allow the construction of a covered patio for outdoor dining with the conditions listed one, two, and three in our packet dated September 16, 2021.
Thank you. Ross, second, please?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ross Sanchez, second by Diana Craybill. Ruth, could we have a roll call?
Diana Craybill?
Aye.
Linda Driscoll?
Yes.
Lynn Fisher?
Yes.
Ross Sanchez?
Yes.
Christopher Downing?
Yes.
Richard Harris?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go, Greg.
Thanks, guys. Have a great day.
You, too.
Okay, we'll move on to our fourth case. Case number site, S I T E 000148 dash 2021, site plan request to allow the construction of an off-site parking lot. Could have the applicant present his case.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you for being here today. I'm the architect working on this project. And what we're looking to do is develop the parcel at 9650 Gulf Boulevard from its current vacant state, was being utilized incorrectly as surface parking for many years here into correct surface parking designed per city standards. We attended city staff, DRC meeting earlier this summer, have coordinated with staff for a valet agreement to have the parking lot available for, you know, events and large holidays where more parking is needed at the beach. Anybody that's been down to buy caddies and any recent years knows there's a crisis of parking that any additional parking that's regulated incorrect would absolutely help address and mitigate some of those concerns for our residents down on that part of the island in Sunset Beach. We think we've done everything, you know, per the standards at this point and appropriate for city. We're prepared to meet any of the FBC requirements in terms of retention for water and management of those issues as well as coordination with FDOT for Gulf Boulevard. Any additional questions? I'll be happy to answer as staff reviews this. And I believe at this time, we are staff approval or recommendations for approval. And I think that that's appropriate based on what we're trying to achieve. Thank you.
I might have missed it. Are you Dennis Lang?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I apologize.
Just wanted to make sure. One question for you. Are you tied in, connected in any way? Is this parking lot, I should say, tied in with the existing parking lot just to the west?
No, sir, it's not. They're completely separate ownerships.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely.
Please have a seat and we'll have the city staff give their report.
Thank you. This is a site plan request to allow the construction of an off-street parking lot located at 9650 Gulf Boulevard. The land use is commercial general and the zoning is commercial general. The subject parcel is a vacant lot that upsets Gulf Boulevard. There was an existing structure that was demolished in 2016. The lot has remained unapproved since. The applicant is currently requesting site plan approval of an off-street parking lot. The applicant has applied for administrative approval from the city manager to allow for vacant, for valet parking pursuant to Section 68486L subsection one of the Treasure Island Code of Ordinances. If the valet parking request is approved, there will be 34, there will be a total of 34 parking spaces, 22 standard and 12 stacked. Stacked parking spaces may be allowed with an approved valet parking request. If the valet parking request is denied, there will be a total of 22 parking spaces, all standard and no stacked. The valet parking service would only be provided on certain calendar dates. The valet would be required to block off all stacked parking spaces at any time the valet service is not provided. There will be a two-way entrance and exit on Harold. There will be a one-way exit onto Gulf Boulevard. The applicant attended a July 27 required pre-app conference at the DRC meeting. An off-street parking lot is permitted use in the CG zoning district. The proposed site plan request for an off-street parking lot is in conformance with all applicable regulations of the CG zoning district with the following exceptions. A restroom facility would not be permitted at grade level if the subject property is located in AE10 flood zone. The restroom facility can be removed from the proposed site plan or designed to meet all current flood plane management regulations. The one-way egress drive on Gulf Boulevard must be reduced from 24 feet wide to 12 to 15 feet wide to meet city regulations. Staff recommends both of these items be included as conditions of site plan approval. The proposed site plan does not involve the subdivision of property or the design of construction of streets. The proposed site plan is not anticipated to cause reduction to the city's current level of service or any component of the city's public infrastructure. An off-street parking lot is permitted within the zoning district. Parking lot is compatible with surrounding commercial development. There will be a two-way entrance and exit on Harold and a one-way exit onto Gulf Boulevard. This should help prevent cars from stacking along Gulf Boulevard as they enter the parking lot. The proposed site plan for a valet parking lot is not anticipated to have pedestrian or bicycle traffic throughout the lot with the exception of the valet attendant. There is no proposed bicycle storage on site. The proposed site plan shall include landscaping as buffering around the perimeter of the lot. This site plan is not required to provide screening. The proposed site plan will require a permit or exemption from the Southwest, Southwest Florida Water Management District and the Florida Department of Transportation. Staff recommends the proposed site plan modification must be approved with the following conditions. One, all construction associated with the project shall be subject to the Florida Building Code, City of Treasure Island Code of Ordinances, Flood Plane Management Regulations, the Fire Prevention Code and any other applicable regulations in effect at the time of permitting. The applicant must obtain a permit or exemption from SWIFT, MUD or FDOT. If the administrative approval for a valet parking request is approved by the city manager, the site plan approval shall consist of all 34 parking spaces, 22 standard spaces and 12 stacked spaces. The stacked parking spaces shall be blocked off at any time the valet service is not provided. If the administrative approval for a valet parking request is denied by the city manager, the site plan approval shall consist of 22 standard parking spaces and no stacked parking, no stacked spaces. The proposed restroom facility must be removed from the site plan or designed to meet all current zoning, building and flood plane management regulations. The one-way egress drive onto Gulf Boulevard must be reduced from 24 feet to 12 to 15 feet wide to meet city regulations. I, I do have one comment. So, Jamie and I met our meeting with the city manager on the valet parking agreement. She is on board with the parking agreement. I still have a couple more questions to ask you, but is, but it looks like she's going that way. She's going to be approving the valet agreement.
Okay, any questions of the city staff?
So, Kathy, in regards to like a valet agreement, does that work in regards to particular months throughout the year? Is it allotted months? Is it just whenever they want? They can either flip the switch and go valet for that day, that night? And then, the next day, go back to self-park? Is that how the valet agreement works?
I haven't seen the written valet agreement, but the way that this would work from just, from what I read is if there's a valet, then there can be stacked parking. So, there can be a car and then a car in front of it. If it's not valet, then those, you can't have that stacked parking.
Understand that.
Yeah. So, as far as the days and the certain times of the year that valet would be permitted would be included into the valet agreement.
Okay, so basically, it's up to the owner if they have a staff member, excuse me, personnel, I guess, that manages the valet company, then they're on site, they're doing that.
Right.
Okay. And then, if obviously, if the owner of the property is like, okay, cool, we're not going to do valet this day, then it's just single parking, not stacked?
Right.
And the city's okay with that type of fluctuation?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Christopher.
Thank you. Kathy, with regard to lighting, I noticed that there was lighting already established or specified for the bathrooms and the parking shed. But I didn't notice on the diagram where if you've, is the city requiring outdoor lighting around the lot itself? Maybe I missed it in the way the drawing is set up, possibly.
The city is not requiring any additional lighting.
And I guess, I guess that would go back to whether or not it's required in the code.
Can we hold on one second? You'll get your shot next.
So, I really just put it out there as a question for discussion. Thank you.
I have a question. The exit on Gulf Boulevard, is that just an exit or an entrance also?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good.
Yeah, you have to, yeah.
Hold on one second.
Hold on one second. You have to approach the podium and go ahead and let Kathy answer that. We're having questions to the city staff at this point.
It's a good question. Hold on real quick. Kathy, just because on SP1, the arrow onto Gulf Boulevard, one way out, not an entrance. And then, in regards to C1, it has arrows in both directions.
And that would cause a nightmare.
It would cause a nightmare.
And I, and I, and again, it could be a, not a typo or something like that. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, because obviously, safety on one way in, I would think that the one. that the one, I would think that the one-way in should come and the in and out should go on the, I don't want to call it, whatever the inside road is.
Harrelson.
Harrel Street. And again, you know, I'm not, I'm just trying to get clarification on the plans that we're reviewing in front of us.
Well, that is, go ahead, Kathy.
On C one, the plans should be changed to show a one-way in only on Gulf Boulevard. Or one-way out, sorry.
Well, that was my question. Kathy, in my past life, I dealt with the Florida Department of Transportation a lot, and they can be rather reluctant to give access of any type to their roadways, especially if they, there's reasonable access in other locations which there is an in, right in, right out. Actually, there's full access on Harold Avenue. Would the city of Treasure Island have any objections if the applicant and the Florida DOT were agreeable to no exit or entrance off of Gulf Boulevard? The DOT is striving greatly to limit all access from their roadways. And first, I was going to ask the city staff and Dennis Lang, I was going to ask you that question next.
Also, even if it is exit and entrance only on Harold, there's going to be people in line waiting to go down Harold to get in there. And if you're familiar with caddies at all, people who live on Treasure Island, Sunset Beach, there's lines waiting to get into their parking lot. And you can't even get home because the people that are, they don't tell the cars to move along, or there's no signs that say no waiting. And it just, I mean, just on that little street, that West Gulf Boulevard, it creates havoc. I would just, I would hate to see a big, long line of cars waiting to go down Harold to get into a parking lot.
Do we know in regards to that curbing that is on Gulf Boulevard today? I mean, I understand it's an empty lot. I understand that there's a need for parking in that area. You know, again, I understand that the development could potentially take place depending on how this meeting goes. Is where it sits today, because I mean, I look at the, I didn't have a chance to drive by it, because you know, you're doing thirty-four miles per hour as you drive by it normally. You know, it looks like there already is kind of an entranceway present day to that lot?
There is a driveway apron there. And that's, Kathy, we could get back to my question. Would the city have any objection to no connection to Gulf Boulevard?
Or no connections at all?
At all.
At all?
I guess that's.
It would make Harold Avenue really crowded.
Yeah, that's true.
And I guess that's, I guess.
You know, it's a situation where I'm just speaking as devil's advocate, having dealt with the Florida Department of Transportation in my past career. They can come back and say, hey, you have reasonable access off of Harold Avenue. We're not going to grant you a, a exit only. And they can do that. Will they? That's up to the architect and the engineer on the job.
And if FDOT permit is required or an exemption is required.
Right.
Prior to us issuing anything. So if FDOT says no, then we will take next steps, but we have to wait and see what they say.
Do we know in regards to the plans that we're looking at today where it has one-way out to Gulf Boulevard? Because now I'm thinking through it and the conversations that we're having, I see why you're wanting that to go out to Gulf Boulevard versus in and having a line sitting on it. But how do you police or enforce people not going in that one-way out according to this plan that we're looking at?
There would have to be sufficient signage from the property owner to put on the private property.
Do we know if that's going to be a right, Dennis, it's, we're going to just have a conversation and then we'll get to questions of the applicant. I mean, can we in our, like if I was going to approve this, could I potentially in that approval put that an exit onto Gulf Boulevard is a right turn only and no left turn? Would I have the ability to do that within my approval?
Yes.
Okay.
And is anybody going to be handing it? Is anybody going to be there to move traffic along? I mean, it's, it'll be crazy if there isn't.
Well, the one thing we do have to remember is that we're only looking at twenty-two spaces or thirty-four valet spaces. So we're not looking at a heck of a lot.
That's true.
You know, signage is what we're looking at in order to control, you know, you'll have a sign that says no entrance, do not enter, that kind of situation.
I would even be willing to have him put lot full signs on Gulf Boulevard so people don't turn down Harold in an attempt to come into a full parking lot and get malayed down in the neighborhood. You know, I think there's reasonable ways that we can address neighborhood concerns about access to their neighborhood, the same way that we have concerns about caddies, limiting access down West Gulf Boulevard. That's a challenge because that's the only viable way that most residents turn down to Sunset Beach. They don't come down past seven-eleven and turn down the little side road to scoop past caddies.
It's a one-way.
And again, that's, and I don't live down there. I lived on Paradise Island my whole life. So for me, it's like, I don't even think about that. I always just turn down at the seven-eleven. I think, I'm a resident of Treasure Island. I think that we need parking out there. I'm absolutely willing to do a one-way turn on the Gulf Boulevard. The reason I think we need to go to FDOT to find out whether I need to close that or not, it's an existing curb cut. The way we've designed our site plan, I benefit from an out onto Gulf Boulevard, turning only going north. I'm okay with that. I think my owner's okay with that. We've previously discussed that. The reason we didn't want an in off of Gulf Boulevard was because we didn't want stacking as people were coming down off of Blind's Pass and seeing cars stopped when there's a blind hump that you're coming over, going thirty or forty miles an hour and crashing into cars.
People are doing seventy over that bridge anyway.
If we can put a sign at our one-way exit coming off on the Gulf Boulevard, lot full, no parking, you know, when it's full. The idea is that when the lot is not with a valet maintenance, it's a limited parking opportunity. There's other parking around in the neighborhood. That's why we want it that way. So it can be self-park when it needs to be and when there is a demand for more parking in our community, holiday weekends, beautiful weather after a shitty week, you know, everybody comes out to the beach. We, we're going to have someone on site to maximize the potential for parking and to do it in a way that is appropriate and managed and not just a bomb of people trying to jam their cars in there. Because that's what it's been for the last four years since the building was demolished. So we're trying to improve a condition that already existed in a legal format. I will absolutely do it with my owner who is willing to do the work. We want to put landscaping in to make this not look like a parking lot. We will, we'll put in lighting if it addresses concerns that are for safety, or we'll do lighting that is shielded so it doesn't go in people's windows. You know, there's total light ordinances that we will comply with. You know, there's a lot of rules for us to already overcome on the books. We are going to do them. We want to do them in the right way. That's why we're here.
Yep.
He's not just trying to illegally operate this lot.
Well, the past history has been, I've seen RVs on the lot, that type of situation. This is a access classification seven roadway, which is the most lax of the DOT. You know, you go from interstate, which is classification one, to basically Gulf Boulevard, which is class seven. So I don't think that they will object to a exit only. I mean, right now, it's a right in, right out, well, no actually, it's a no access right now.
Right now, there's no limitations.
Yeah.
People turn every direction they want and sit in the middle of the road. It's, it's very dangerous.
You know, the problem with making it northbound only, right turn only, it's, that's hard to control as well. You can only make the best effort. But I just wanted to bring that up, that if you get a reviewer with the Florida Department of Transportation who happens to be a real strange at that time, he can say, hey, you got reasonable access.
I a hundred percent agreed with staff's original statement, which is if FDOT denies me that permission, my site plan will reflect the accurate permissions we receive from the state. We're not going to be trying to overcome non-permissions or demonstrate non-compliance. We want to do the right thing.
Okay.
I think that's really at the end of the day. We want to do the right thing. If there are concerns that neighbors have, please come up to the podium and articulate them. We will address them.
Okay, thank you. We do have three cards in regard to this site plan for folks in the audience. We'll start out with Wesley Klein.
Richard, I just had a quick for, because we're still in board discussion, right? Or?
Sure.
Yeah, so.
Another question.
Just real quick, I ran through here on my bicycle the last two Sundays, just because I had a night, specifically this last Sunday because of this. I will tell you, and I'm not speaking for the neighborhood, I do not live in that neighborhood, but I do feel like this parking lot would help impact in a positive matter in regards to the amount of cars that are parking on roadways. I actually saw some residents' houses with cones and signs saying, please do not park. And I just feel like, I know that it's twenty-two self, or thirty-four, I mean, I do think that it helps a problem for parking. And I did want to note, because Dennis, or excuse me, Mr. Lang brought up a good point, you know, there is a lot of green space on this site plan. And I do find that extremely beneficial for, you know, potentially approving this project. I just wanted to share that with the board.
Okay, thank you, Ross. Mr. Klein, go ahead with your comments.
Yes, I'm Wesley Klein. I live at ninety-eight fifty Harold Avenue, which is just one house away from the proposed parking lot. Parking's a problem, whether you have a parking lot or not. Parking lot, forty dollars, fifty dollars for a day, people park on the streets. That's just the way it is because they're allowed to. But my main concern is the safety. You, you've talked about the Gulf Boulevard, how busy it is. Less than a month ago, we had a car crash into the seven-eleven, hit the gas pumps. A person was hit and killed crossing Gulf Boulevard in the last five years. My wife and I were coming back from the beach. We just had crossed Gulf Boulevard, and a police cruiser got rear-ended, and he got flipped over and he went sliding through that intersection. It's just a dangerous place. So putting more traffic in a dangerous area doesn't make any sense. There's already one parking lot there. Only time there's ever needing any parking is a sunny weekend or a holiday. So in the rest of the time, it's vacant. And the parking lot that's there now, their restroom is never open. I have people coming into my yard to urinate. They've been drinking beer on the beach all day long. Anyway, you know about that. My concern is the drainage with this new parking lot is going to add to the already flooding rains that we get in the summertime. Harold floods. Can we have a guarantee if this goes through that the restrooms will be open? That we will have somebody there in charge? In charge? I don't know what to do when there's nobody parking there. But still, I don't like people whipping it out and peeing on my boots.
Can I comment on that?
Well, hold on one second. Let's let him finish first.
I got, just one more thing and I'll be done. A few years back, this parcel was approved for a motel, a small one, small motel. And in my thinking that on a tax basis, a small hotel would be a much better decision. You have your sales tax, your bed taxes, you don't have people driving in and out. They just come to the motel and they stay. And, and I like to see the zoning to be progressive to help keep Treasure Island safe. And has he maybe tried to get a hotel room lately? They're in dire, dire shortage. Any questions?
No, thank you. We'll let the other two cards speak and then we'll have a chance for the applicant rebuttal as well as board comments.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could we now have Mr. Brian Kessler?
Hello, everybody. I'm Brian Kessler. I am a representative of the property next door, the parking lot that was developed. I am just here to let you guys know that we are not in agreeance with the current site plan. We don't feel that they are required to meet the same requirements that we were as far as the lack of a retention pond, the setbacks from the building behind and to the right of the parking lot, things of that nature to allow for the twenty-two spaces or thirty-four valet spaces. That is all that I have to say.
Thank you, Brian. Last card, we have Ryan Turnbull.
Yes, I'm Ryan Turnbull. I live at one thirty-one ninety-eighth Avenue. We have a parking lot right behind us, which is just gentleman's company. We have, now you guys want to do another parking lot, and then also on the side of my house is where it's an empty lot, it's empty property, where they do the overflow for caddies, parking, sea dogs, shrimpies, let's see, the Florist Place, they use it all for parking lot. They have, they leave their boats over there. So now I'm around, now I'm going to have three parking lots around my, our house. Okay? Now I have, we have animals. We like to walk around. Harold Street is very, very busy with all the condos and everything right there. And where the park, where the parking lot is, is the beginning of it. So when people come down Harold, they're going to be backed up trying to get into the parking lot, there's going to be accidents right there. It's not, it's not going to be on Gulf Boulevard, it's going to be on Harold Street. Okay? And we have so much flooding that goes on when we have storms and rain and everything, it floods. Last time we had the storm that came in, was it November? It flooded, came up to our, our houses. So you're going to have people trying to, you know, go and when we have, like I said, during the summertime, we have that thirty-minute rain, and the sewers can't take it and it goes up. And then you have waves of water coming into our property. It's not fair to us that live here, pay taxes and support our community, to keep on getting these parking lots here. Now, you guys did the beach access across the street from us with no parking. And so now that, now that there's no parking, that everybody wants to come back into our neighborhoods, that we, we pay our taxes for, and we are hard-earned money to pay our mortgage and our taxes and our, and our stability. Now you're bringing all these people in here with all these cars, they're, they're coming around the corner, scooping real quick. I have my animal. I like to take my time and go down with my dog. I don't have, I don't have to worry about certain times of the day or nighttime worrying about these people leaving the beach drunk and everything else and they can, because they don't live here, they don't care about this area. All they care about is them having fun, which, hey, we're all about everybody coming to the beach, have fun, but be respectful. But a lot of times, there's not a lot of respectful people out there, as we all know. Okay? And this is very passionate to me because, you know, my father's lived at that property for thirty years. I've lived on this, on Treasure Island, Sandy Beach for forty-one years. I've lived here. I went to Gulf Beaches, I went to Sixteenth Street Middle School, I went to Lakewood High School. I grew up around here. I love this place. This is my home. I love, you know, Foxy's, I was here. I always loved telling people to go to Foxy's. I work at PJ, Sandy Beach Oyster Bar. I tell people to come down to Treasure Island, tell them to come to Sandy Beach because I love this place. Yes, we do need parking. I understand that. But when you're taking and pushing the homeowners back and back and back with all this parking, it's not fair because there's parking on ninety-eighth, okay? And there's also parking on, just the street parking. And then we got it on First East, okay, on the street parking. So when you're trying to come around the corner, someone, there's, you can only, there's only one way. So if someone coming this way and you can't see because, because the car's right there, you, we get an accident. So we're going to have more accidents and more trouble. So that's all I got to say. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Amen.
Okay, thank you for your time. The applicant, do you have any rebuttal to any of those comments you just heard?
I think I can respond to some of them. In regards to Mr. Turnbull's comments here about respectfulness of the neighborhood of people coming in, I certainly agree with that as, I grew up on Treasure Island as well. So I certainly appreciate your concern about the respect of our community, especially by people coming in from the outside. I think that for me as an architect, the best that I can do with owners when they come to me with requests to develop their parcels is work with them to achieve an economically viable solution that I feel is compatible and appropriately addresses the concerns that I would have as a resident. I do feel that my owner's trying to do those things for us in this regard. And the reason I can articulate it to you confidently is that I think we need more parking. And it's not, if we don't provide it, they're still going to come. People are still going to come to our beach because it's spectacular, it's beautiful. They're going to come here. Because people, like you're telling them, come here. They're, they're going to do it because we're not wrong by telling them to do it. But we need to provide them a place to put their cars that's respectful for other neighbors, like the gentleman that spoke about people urinating in his yard. I absolutely understand that that's disrespectful and not appropriate. One of the concerns that we had was trying to provide for facilities on-site, where that would not necessarily have to take place in your yard. One of the challenges I have with that building code is that I can't build facilities at ground level. They won't let me permit it that way. They're going to make me elevate that structure. And the cost of development is exponentially higher for me to solve that for my owner. And as the architect, I can't force his hand to choose to develop something or build something, even though I think it's appropriate. So where I would say, to respond to your comments specifically, sir, I would be asking the staff to help me find a solution to develop those bathroom facilities for us in a way that they're appropriately accessible at ground level. It's difficult in building code to overcome some of the structural problems that this gentleman raised, insofar as the setbacks and the retention requirements. I will solve them. Do not doubt, I will solve them to the same level of fitness that you did, because I have to, and I will. Now, insofar as the setbacks to the neighbors, my parcel's different than yours. I don't have setbacks on those edges, but I am putting green space there, and I'm putting trees between me and those neighbors, because I'm being respectful and appropriately considering the needs of my community, our community, in my appropriate, in, I believe, my appropriate recommendation of what we can put here. I heard you say a motel. I want a motel there, too. But I'm here to tell you, the cost of a motel on that site, you can only get eight units. How are you going to make your money back? It's economically undevelopable in that configuration. And that's the hard part, that as a community, I as an architect can help articulate and bridge that gap, and articulate for you the reasons why certain things can't happen in the way that we all think they would, and rightly could, should. Bathroom's at grade level. Why not? That makes total common sense. Well, building code says that's not really good, because it creates infrastructure that's at risk when there's storms and flooding and all these other reasons. So there's a lot of red tape that I have to navigate to try and arrive at, what I believe I am providing for us as an appropriate solution for an owner that's going to do something. They're going to do, someone's going to do something on that property. So whether we want to participate and see something appropriate and consider come forward, or something that just stamps as, "I could put more parking on there if you want." You know, I really could. I could have got 40 real spaces on there and made it a parking lot that looks like this gentleman's. No disrespect meant. But it could look like a solid parking lot with just a little green ribbon around the outside edge. But as Mr. Sanchez points out, I provided almost, what do you think, it's like 25% of my site is green. That's excessive compared to what I actually need to by code. So I sincerely respect what everybody brought forward to us today. I respect the considerations of staff. I will re-articulate. I want to do the right thing. You know, I'm willing to do the right thing. I'll follow the rules. I'll work with F D O D, I'll work with what we need to. You know, but I got to do what I can for my client as well. And I feel that what we're providing is that middle road. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions to the board, for either city staff or the applicant?
Kathy, in regards to private parking lots, is there hours that are set on them in regards to when they're accessible? That means at a 24-hour availability when it's a private parking lot?
I would think that would be up to the applicant to, if they have pay stations.
Okay. If they have.
To provide, right. Because if they want their customers to pay for parking, they would, if they don't have someone there collecting money 24/7, then they would need pay stations. But the applicant is better suited to answer that question, the 24/7, 365 days a year, what, now I can say, when I talked to the city manager about the license agreement, one of her questions was specifically the hours of operation, and specifically valet versus just open parking. So, and I have not presented that to the applicant yet, so I don't have any answers yet. But that will become part of the valet agreement as well.
And then this, this does fall within the setbacks. There's no variance that's required. I just want to make that clear and on the record.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will close the public hearing, and we'll go forward with.
Sorry.
Board comments. Yeah, I'm going to.
Go ahead. You can hear us.
Yeah, we're going to have.
And I have a question. Oh, you're going to do it now?
Yeah, we're going to have board comments.
Okay.
That includes questions.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Because I have a question, and I'm not sure if it's for the board or the applicant. Should I ask it now, or?
Sure.
Yeah. The curb cut on Gulf Boulevard, it's wide enough for two cars. So would it be possible to angle that so they could only make the turn one way?
Do not address the board from your seat, please. We're currently, you either have to address the question right now to staff. We do have to have a little decorum here. Situation is, is condition number six that actually addresses that.
Yeah, Kathy had mentioned it in her report.
It will be reduced to either 12 to 15 feet in width, and we will modify it to be one directional.
Okay, go ahead, Linda.
Oh, it was for somebody, the gentleman that owns the other parking lot? I know this is like, I just want to know why the restrooms aren't working.
The restrooms have been broken numerous times, and we've repaired them numerous times. They're currently down, and we're waiting for a plumber to fix them.
Okay, please, once again, please do not address the board from your seat. We appreciate that, Brian.
Thank you.
I'll get into that point in a second. Anybody else?
I have a question, and it has to do with the traffic flow on Harrell. I'm not as familiar with that corner, but I do know on the south side of Gulf Boulevard, Harrell's one-way coming out of Sunset Beach. If this gentleman here has problems and wondering about how there's going to be block, how there's going to be evident, we got two-way street, and we have parking allowed on that two-way street. So now we're, we have the potential of having 34 more cars, which isn't that much, but when you're living there, that's an extravagant amount. Is there any way that we can postpone any decision on this to possibly address either eliminating some of that street parking on Harrell? Or can we get it to go one direction? And how would that affect making a circle for the residents? I am very concerned, there are different areas throughout this island, in every neighborhood, that you have an area that gets excessive traffic that other areas don't get. I live on Palms. Where I'm at on Palms, we've got about a five-block radius that we get, anybody that's on Gulf Boulevard, if they turn down on Isle of Palms, they're coming by our house. Well, Lynn lives out on 8th Street. Well, she doesn't get that traffic. So what is good for her, she may not know what I have to endure up there. And I'm trying to look at that from all the way around, because, to tell you the truth, I want to see more parking on the city, because that helps all of us. But I want to be very careful on how we go about this in addressing the concerns of the citizens that have to deal with that immediate area, where that additional traffic is going to be. Is it a big one? No. But it could be, I've got my one house here, or I've got here. The drainage we can take care of, because they'll be forced to do permeable concrete like we've done down in our city lots, more unlikely, or something to that effect. But I would be wondering about, is the city, can they even entertain, and in a fairly quickly way, because I hate us holding up production on this city for having good things happening, but I don't want to make a rash decision that really just ruins somebody's peace and quiet and what their solitude is. So can we do one-way traffic? Or can we eliminate some of that street parking and make sure parking enforcement, and not just parking enforcement, but law enforcement, when they see somebody, when they're doing their check, and they see somebody parked there, writing up a cotton-picking ticket? Now, those are some of the things that I would like to see addressed before we even go any further, because I do have some sympathy for these people, because I have seen it in other areas. Just like at Capri, they have more stuff with people around Roselli Park. They get more traffic around there than what people do clear out on their 8th Street and stuff. So we need to be very considerate about that. So I will take that to anybody, for the staff, or for the applicant, or the residents. On if any of that stuff seems to be a possibility, is it workable, doable, and what their thoughts are on it?
Okay, thank you, Diane. I'd like to make a few comments. First off, to address Brian's comments, one of the requirements, condition number two, is the fact that you have to obtain a permit from the Southwest Florida Water Management District. You're not going to get an exemption. You have 9,900 and some odd square feet of impervious area. So you will have to get a SWIFTMUD permit, and you will have to provide stormwater quality treatment. Because we live on a barrier island, we can't flood the Gulf, so you don't have to provide attenuation storage. And the parking lot next door, they ended up with a pretty good-sized detention pond, because they provided stormwater quality treatment. You'll end up with a detention pond on this site, you will probably lose one or two spaces. I'm going to let you figure that out. The other comment is, in regard to safety, I've lived on Treasure Island for 35 years. This is the third time I've seen a vehicle hit the gas pumps at 711. I got to see video of that Corvette sliding through the detention pond. It was pretty good until it was required to be taken off of Facebook. Situation is, if you're racing a car at 3:00 AM at 115 miles an hour around that corner, you can expect some safety problems. You've just got to do the best you can. That is not the best-designed intersection I've ever seen at the corner of Gulf Boulevard and West Gulf Boulevard. But that's what we have. You know, the situation is, is as with the parking lot that currently exists just to the west of this, this is a temporary use. When the hotel market gets to the point, or the condo market gets to the point, you can bulldoze a parking lot in about an hour and a half. So the situation is, future development will happen there. You know, the fact is, when Brian and his group built the parking lot to the west, there was a lot of controversy on that one. I've observed it ever since it opened, because I do live on Sunset Beach along with Linda. And the 86 parking spots that they built there did provide some benefit to what happens out on Sunset Beach. Let's face it, what happens in this area is people look first for a free parking spot. And when those run out, they're going to the city lots, second, down there at the, we have four lots on Sunset Beach. Those will fill up second. And then we're going to go to the higher-end paid parking lots, and they will go to those third. They, don't address me from your seat. The public hearing is closed. Anyway, the situation being is, the parking lots that were built a few years ago has helped the situation out on Sunset Beach. I firmly feel. You know, Dennis Lang, the architect, does have some work to do at this point. This is one of the preliminary steps. He will have to get his SWIFTMUD permits, he will have to get his Florida Department of Transportation driveway connection permits, and he will have to get building permits from this city. The one thing that we'll address from Brian's standpoint is that hideous trailer that sits in the middle of your parking lot, I don't know if you recall, but I was on this board when Paula Cohen was building her privy out there. And I really didn't want a trailer then. Still don't want it now. And the fact is, city staff has requested that, you know, the bathroom facilities for this project be removed, because they can't meet FEMA rules. And I think one of your conditions, Brian, is before a hurricane, you have to remove that trailer, so it doesn't go flying somewhere. Well, in common sense world, the last thing you're worrying about if a category-three storm is headed toward Treasure Island, is towing a, is disconnecting a water sewer and electric from a trailer and towing it off. You're just trying to survive. Anyway, the bottom-line situation is, this project will be a good project for this area. They cannot make drainage worse than what it is, because they are required to not discharge additional water off of their property than what currently goes. And they have to make sure that it has a complete access, pathway for drainage to get to the, to blind pass, and that will happen. Situation with this is, parking lot right next door has provided a market that shows parking is needed in this island. And if you look at the existing parking lot on a weekday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, it's usually empty. You know, very rarely has any cars in it at all. I think on Thursday, or Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, it's a different matter. Your valet parking will probably be enforced in Saturday and Sunday. Overall, I think it's going to be a good project, and I firmly encourage the city to work with the applicant, to make sure, especially that parking, on-street parking, which is free, is taken care of, you know, that we don't have any traffic congestion problems. You know, that Sunset Beach is a problem. We, everybody's looking for that free spot, and it happens. But with that comment, I do support this project. And I think if it meets all the requirements, it will be a benefit for this area. Because what I have observed in this private piece of property over the last few years is RVs sitting there, parking all over the place. So this will actually be a benefit. So with that, any other comments from the board, or can we have a motion?
You know, Richard, I do have a couple of comments. I mean, one of the things that, first off, I appreciate all of your bullets in regards to, you know, your feedback within the board. For those, for those residents that are out there that have issues with the current parking situations that are on the streets, or illegally parked, or patrons of bars using, you know, the bathroom in their yards, I mean, we do have a, we are not the police department or law enforcement. So we do have a local police office, you know, police agency that will be more than happy to hear those concerns, as well as parking enforcement. One of the discussions that I think that is important in regards to any potential approval or approve with conditions that are listed within our packet are the removal of the restroom. Because I do think that that is, I mean, from a board's perspective, I mean, we have one parking lot that has the trailer. I know that a lot of people don't have favorable opinions about the trailer. In regards to this parking lot, now you're talking about another parking lot with no bathroom. I was not a part of the neighboring parking lot approval, so I don't know any of the conditions, I don't know any of the characteristics from that standpoint. But if we do have residents' concerns in regards to people using the bathroom in public, and then we have this potential plan that's placed that shows a bathroom, but we're saying removing the bathroom, I do think that is something that needs to be addressed within the board. And last comment from my perspective is, like Mr. Lang's comment in regards to, you know, our beach being beautiful, I mean, people are going to come here. I mean, that is without question, you know, from where, regardless if you, wherever you live on Treasure Island, you know, there are going to be people that visit the beach, and it is going to impact whatever neighborhood you live in. It's gorgeous, it's understandable. People are looking for other things to do, you know, within their own lifestyles, and coming to the beach is, you know, obviously, a hot topic right now. We are a barrier island. We do not have the space of a metro city. We do not have all of this area, so parking can be an issue. And it, you know, additional parking for people visiting is something that I'm extremely interested in. But I do think that we have to address some of these conditions, you know, within this board prior to any approval.
Okay, any other comments from the board?
Yes, if I could have a chance. I just, first, a question. Is parking, are there, is there existing parking on Harrell Avenue today, on both sides?
Yes, there is.
And that is city parking?
It is.
Or it's just free parking?
It's free. It is a public right-of-way, so you can park on it. And, you know, that is one thing that has plagued Sunset Beach for the last 35 years, is parking on both sides of the side streets, where you cannot get a fire truck or an ambulance down those streets. The police department worked real well with the city staff and the residents. A few years ago, we came up with a program with one side of the street parking on all the avenues down on Sunset Beach. If you go down there, there's a, there's signage that says, "No parking this side of the street, Saturday, Sunday, and legal holidays."
So in the interest of more structured parking, has, does the city have the ability to do some restriction on one side or the other, as a part of this approval in that area of Harrell Avenue?
Well, it's more of a situation where, for instance, on some, some of the roads down to the south, it was a wait-and-see attitude, let's see what happens. And when an ambulance cannot get down this 85th Avenue to my house, for instance, I made the call and said, "Hey, I need one of those signs down here." And we got it, you know. It's a situation where, unfortunately, sometimes the citizens. You know, and it's a situation where unfortunately, sometimes the citizens do have to be proactive when it comes to this, because there's nothing worse than, and it has happened to me several times, when you're trying to get home and you cannot get to your house because of parking on both sides of the street.
So I guess I, back to my original question, whether or not the city has some ability to restrict parking as a part of this approval or not?
It's part of a larger discussion with the city manager and her staff, so I can't say either way. I'd have to start with the city manager and then go to the, you know, see what she says, and then take it from there.
Public hearing is closed, sir.
So Kathy, I realize that we're just discussing this particular site plan, so we have to, in that respect, vote on this irrespective of how, what the city may do in the future, restricting parking, parking on Harrell Avenue? That's my question, I guess, and I guess that's true. Okay.
It's like, this applicant, this applicant is for this site plan, it's not Harrell Avenue address.
Sure, sure. And then with respect to the bathrooms, I understand the practical part of this, of the fact of it's difficult to build something to code. So, and the temp, nobody likes these temporary ones, but can a site plan like this require temporary bathrooms when it's being used for valet, for instance, where there's a high density, or is that just impractical?
You know, I'll make the same comment that I made five years ago with the other parking lot. Sea Dogs is now open for business, has two sets of bathrooms. Caddies is improving their bathrooms. Taco Bus has a set, Seven-Eleven has a set. There was a fifth one.
So they're in the area, it's just, it's a difficulty, you know, in terms of when you have a crowd, I understand.
And does, do illegal things happen? Yes, they do. And it's unfortunate, you know, you've got people that consume too much, and then they get to a parking lot, and we've heard all the stories of people urinating all over the place. And the situation is, is our, the solution five years ago was a trailer. And that trailer, quite frankly, is a eyesore. And I encouraged the fact that with all those six sets of bathrooms I just listed off to you, that people should be encouraged to use them. That's a, in a perfect world, which of course does not happen. The question I had for the city attorney, real quick, we have one individual, Mr., correct me if I got it wrong, Ryan Turnbull. Do we want to get his comments and reopen the public hearing, or do we want to remain, want it to remain closed?
It's, it's the board's discretion. The gentleman had an opportunity to speak during public comment. If the board wants to reopen the public hearing to take in additional comments, they can. But you have provided that opportunity, you certainly can close and do consideration and make your motion without opening it. It's at your discretion.
I'd like to give him the opportunity as a neighbor.
Well, the thing is, I've always wanted this board to be open to all information, so please approach the podium and make your comments.
It's just about the parking on the street. Harrell Street, there is no parking on Harrell Street at all. There's a sign right next to the parking lot that says, "No parking on this side." And then on Ninety-Eighth, where I live on, there's only one parking lot on the, if you're going down the street, on this side over here, you're not allowed to park on this side of the street, and you're allowed to park on this side. On First, it's the same thing, on the left-hand side, you're allowed to park on the side, on the right-hand side, you're not allowed to park. I just want to clarify that for you guys, so you know about the parking.
And if there are concerns within your neighborhood or your neighbors, please contact your city, your city commission, or come speak to the city in regards to what those concerns are.
I, I gotcha.
You know, if people are parking illegally, I'd love to go out there and write them a ticket, but I don't have that enforcement.
No, no, I was just saying that they're letting one side park and one side not park. That's all, like you were saying, he was saying down on Treasure Island, you know, you couldn't get the, you know, the police station car down, down the road, because both, both cars on both sides. I was letting you know that on First and on Ninety-Eighth, it's only allowed on one side. You're allowed to park on one, you're allowed to park on one side, but not on the other side, so you can have one area where your traffic go through.
Understood.
And my thing is that, like you said, I'll talk to them and see if we can get where we cannot have parking on those streets at all.
There you go.
And that is a good comment that, you know, in practice, I mean, we've had many situations in the last few, thirty-five years where situations develop to the point where, hey, something's gotta happen here. We had a house on Sunset Beach that was doing weddings on a regular basis, and they would run their valet parking up and down both sides of the street. So we were able to get some, the city of Treasure Island to put some no parking signs out there. That's one of those situations where, as this project develops, we may have more no parking on the street situations. The one comment further is, I think that the parking on Sunset Beach and in this vicinity, since the first parking lot opened, has vastly improved. I mean, that was eighty-six parking spots, more or less, that they park there, and they do not go up and down looking for side street parking. And that works out very, very well. We're gonna have twenty-two or thirty-four spaces here, and, you know, during a holiday weekend, there's a lot of people that try to park here illegally. They just pull in there and see what happens. And so this way is a way to control it through valet and designated parking. And, you know, the only last comment is, I really am bothered by the bathroom situations, but, you know, there's no good solution to this. I think what the previous city staff had wanted to see to the west would be a bathhouse somewhat similar to the parking lot over, across the street from Publix. And those things, that would be really nice. They also probably cost a hundred thousand dollars, if not more. But with that, I still think we should firmly support this venture and move forward with this project. So with that, was anybody on this board care to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion in regards to case number site zero-zero-one-four-eight-dash-zero-two-one. Case number, which I, I'm sorry, my apologies. All right, let me start over. I'll make a motion to approve, with conditions, case number site dash zero-zero-one-four-eight-dash-two-zero-two-one. A site plan request to allow the construction of an off-street parking lot with the conditions as follows. I'm going to read them because I think that's important, have details. Number one, all construction associated with this project shall be subject to the Florida Building Code, City of Treasure Island Code of ordinances, floodplain management regulations, the Fire, Florida Fire Prevention Code, and other applicable regulations in effect at the time of permitting. Number two, the applicant must obtain a permit or exemption from SWF MUD and FDOT. Number three, if the administrative approval for valet parking request is approved by the city manager, the site plan approval shall consist of all thirty-four parking spaces, twenty-two standard spaces, and twelve stacked park, park, stacked spaces. The stacked parking spaces shall be blocked off at any time the valet services is not provided. Number four, if the administrative approval for valet parking request is denied by the city manager, the site plan approval shall consist of twenty-two standard parking spaces and no stacked spaces. Number five, the proposed restroom facility must be removed from the site plan or designed to meet all current zoning, building, and floodplain management regulations. Number six, the one-way egress drive onto Gulf Boulevard must be reduced from twenty-four feet wide to twelve to fifteen feet wide to meet city regulations.
Thank you. Ross can have a second, please.
Second.
Okay, who is the second?
It's fine, you can do, Linda, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll second.
Y'all said it simultaneously, almost. Okay, motion by Ross Sanchez, second by Diana Crable and Linda Driscoll. How's that? Ruth, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Diana Crable?
Aye.
Linda Driscoll?
Yes.
Lynn Fisher?
Yes.
Ross Sanchez?
Yes.
Christopher Downing?
Yes.
Richard Harris?
Yes.
Thank you.
And of course, one of the stipulations, Mr. Lang, is the fact that the city will need to see that SWF MUD permit. And that was one of the major problems that the parking lot to your west had, because they, they had some challenges. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Public comments. Anybody from, in the public that wishes to speak? This is your last chance, Brian.
The meeting is not over. If you could take your conversation outside, thank you.
Okay, reports and comments of the city attorney, staff, and board members. We'll start out with the, with Jennifer, city. Nothing from Jennifer's staff, Kathy?
Hi, yes, thank you. So the next LPA meeting, October fourteenth, at six o'clock, we're gonna be presenting the first three elements in the comprehensive plan, and you will receive those packets way ahead of time. We're hoping to get them out next week to you, to everybody. So with directions on how to proceed, because it is, we haven't done it in a really long time, so we want to make sure that you're, you know what to do, and you're prepared, and when you come back to the LPA on the fourteenth, that we can just proceed as what the directions say. So we just want to make sure that you'll be receiving those packages next week. It's gonna be large. If you have questions, you can call me, and I'd be happy to walk you through what the directions say. Thank you.
Okay, board members, I know, Linda, you had some comments you wanted to make previously.
Ah, yes, I'm concerned about the VRBO and Airbnb on Treasure Island. It's getting totally out of hand. And we're talking about traffic. Do you know how much traffic these people bring in? Because then they have their friends come, they have their relatives come. It's happening weekly. A lot of people are advertising for four days, just little cottages. I mean, it's, the traffic is incredible just with, with these people. And then I always tell them, when they advertise, that, I tell them the code, that they're only allowed five times in a twelve-month, whatever, twelve, you know, five-time occupancy in a twelve-month period, and they're like, why? Nobody seems to know the rule, the reasons. I mean, I don't know what these realtors are telling these people when they sell, but I know when I bought my house seven years ago, I was told that, that I could only rent five times. I mean, you know, but I don't, it's going, it's out of hand. It's totally out of hand on Treasure Island. There's only one way in and one way out. The crowd is incredible. I brought my neighbor to a hearing, he rented eighteen weeks in a row. They were using my yard, and he denied it all, and I had footage of it. I had the license plate and people's names. It's, it just doesn't seem to matter.
Well, the one, one thing in regard to that, Linda, is, you know, we've had, I've had, when previous commissioner Ken Keyes and I met with you guys, and the difficult situation is, is finding the violators. I mean, as we said then, and you hate to rat out your neighbor, but the code enforcement board is run, our department is run on a complaint basis. And if your neighbor is doing it, it's up to you to complain. And we have a case, nine-four, eight-four-nine-oh, that has already gone before, gone to trial, and that was adjudicated in favor of the city of Treasure Island. And, correct me where I'm misspeaking there, Jennifer, but, you know, he was told, hey, you can't rent out more than five times a year. And the biggest problem we've ever had is, okay, I won't do it anymore. And then you realize, nobody's, you know, it's hard, it's hard to enforce, let's put it that way, it's extremely hard to enforce.
And then now you have the, any complaint that's filed, it has to be registered with the person that is complaining, so.
Yep.
It's on record when it comes to your neighbor finding out who it is.
And that's, I don't care if they find out who, I mean, they should just be following the code. And they shouldn't make it miserable for the people who live, who've been living there, who pay taxes there.
Yep. I have new neighbors every week.
Yeah.
Directly across from me.
Right.
And the only, let's put it this way, Josh does the best he can, but when you're driving up and down the street in a city-marked car, you can't tell if that's an owner, or you can't tell who's staying in that house. And unfortunately, I have two neighbors that are doing the VRBO, and, you know, it's up to the residents, unfortunately, they know that they're getting a new neighbor every week. And it's up to you to take pictures of the license plates. The city's very good at reading the reviews of VRBO, because they kind of confess their sins online, so to speak. But am I incorrect in saying that, Kathy?
No, you're right, it's very difficult for us to approve short-term rentals, but we document, document, document as best as we can, and we do track, we know who the offenders are, and we do track them. We rely on complaints, but they have to come with a name. We, according to the Florida statutes, we are no longer to take complaints without a name. So that's one thing. Something else we did last month was Jamie and Josh both talked to two realtor, I guess, two realtor groups, associations, or whatever, about short-term rentals. And we have a new flyer that goes out that states how many, what zoning district you're in, and how many times per year you're allowed to rent. So it does, is very specific on that. So we are doing outreach, we're doing the best that we can. And we're also working with Pinellas County as well, so we're doing everything we can. But if complaints, we just need a name, and that person needs to come forward, they can't just say their name, and then they say, "I don't want to be involved." So that's another aspect, too, so.
Notwithstanding the violators that are out there, I'm sure more communication, just in general, can help in terms of people doing the right thing. Some people really don't know, I think.
They have no idea.
And we are trying to do as much outreach as possible, so.
And, and isn't it true, it's not, the five times is just in certain areas. Some places, it's only one time a year, twice a year you can do it.
It depends on where you are. For you guys over there in Palms, Capri, and Paradise, I think it is only twice a year.
There's a part of Palms that is five times.
Yeah, the front part.
The front part.
Same with Capri, right?
Yes. I mean, I'd make a suggestion to, I mean, it's work and money, but if you're not getting the money you're supposed to get from these people that are renting, so if, if there was something to each homeowner, like somebody suggested something at the commissioners, commissioners' meeting to send out something to each homeowner about the new recyclable thing, well, why couldn't we send out something to each homeowner on Treasure, on Sunset, Treasure Island, that, what the codes are?
I believe in the city of Gulfport, you're required to register and pay a fee. It's a nominal fee, I think. I don't know what the requirement is in Treasure Island. If you do short-term rentals, do you have to register it?
Yes. We require a BTR, and there are also other state requirements and licenses that the person who's renting needs to follow.
So there is a fine, a fine setup?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. It's just a matter of the difficulty enforcing it.
Yeah.
It's an interesting situation, because I feel like you, if someone does register, and let's just say it is in Paradise Island, and they get two whatever turnovers per year, I mean, I wonder, in that registration, does it say, "If you don't obey by this, then you get fined X amount of dollars"? I mean, is that in there? I mean, is it like, one of those situations where?
No, so on the business tax receipt, when you go and you apply for that, to pay the business tax, there is a section that you actually have to check an initial that says that you understand the restrictions on the short-term rentals with regard to it being either the two or the six, depending on where the property is located. So it, there, the folks who are coming in and getting that license, well, I shouldn't say license, they're coming in and paying that tax and demonstrating the fact that they have a license from the state are, are admitting that they recognize what the regulations are. Now, whether or not they follow those regulations, that then becomes a code enforcement issue.
Yeah, I wonder if, selfishly, I wonder if my neighbor does that, because they're only allowed twice a year, but I see thirty-five different people throughout the year.
And I will tell you that we've had folks who have had business tax receipts, and then they just renew. And so that wasn't always on the application. It is on the application now and has been, I think, for the last year. Same thing with the state licensing requirements, that wasn't always on the application. That wasn't always on the application, but it is on the application now.
So, we could encourage residents that have questions about properties that are registered or are not registered, email or contact code enforcement? Would that be the proper protocol?
That's correct.
Yes.
I don't know what the fine schedule is, but I know in North Miami Beach or Miami Beach, they had pretty serious problems when all this Airbnb started up, and they raised the fines significantly. So, that it's really, you know, quite, you know, encouraging, I guess, to follow the rule.
It does come through code enforcement, and the code enforcement board is the one who authorizes the fine.
Yeah. And the fines for a first-time offender, the maximum could be $500 a day. And for a repeat violator, it's...
It escalates.
It's $250 and $500.
$250 and $500. I knew as soon as I said $500, I was like, "No." But it's $250 and $500. It is. And but those... Most of those cases, by the time if they've been giving... If they've been given the courtesy notification and the notice of violation, by the time they actually get to hearing, it's normally before the special magistrate. And then I can tell you that of the cases that we've taken to the special magistrate, the special magistrate has found them to be in violation. And then of those cases that have gone further to be appealed to the circuit court, the cities prevailed in those matters. So, you know, when we are able to enforce and prove our case, we are able to, you know, to carry it through.
I have a question on that, and it'll follow up on all this Airbnb. It doesn't necessarily have to be rented out. If you have the change of occupancy in that building, depending on which zoning you're under, it doesn't matter if you're receiving money or not, you can still be in violation. Is that correct? Because that's a lot... A lot of people say, is that I'm not charging them anything.
So, if you're holding it out to the public as, you know, an accommodation, whether it's that you're receiving rent for it or not, but if you're advertising it and holding it out, then it is... And it is based on change of occupancy, regardless of whether or not you receive rent?
Because I think some of the people even think that because they're not receiving money for it, that it doesn't count.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, then the money is not real.
Yeah.
But if you don't advertise it, and you let your family members come down, and you have a large family, that's allowed, isn't it?
If you're there.
As long as you don't advertise it.
No, as long as you're... Yeah.
My neighbor has a biker gang as a family member. It's incredible. It blows my mind.
Wow.
I appreciate you bringing that up, because additional info is important for the public to hear. And I think that that flyer that goes out, I think, is a good thing.
It's a start.
Could potentially also draw people's minds to say, "Well, maybe I should rent out my house," or something like that. So, hopefully, it works out in a positive. Can we go on? Can I bring up a next topic that I had a question about?
Sure.
Kathy, in regards to building inspections for residential, is that done... Still done through SafeBuild, or have we brought that in-house from the inspector process? It used to be done through a company, I think it was called SafePro?
Well, you... SafeBuild, that's right. We're still contracting out to SafeBuild for our building services.
Okay.
And if, as always, we have a 24/7 inspection line. It's extension 431.
Is there any way with those inspectors that we could talk about, like, the cleanliness of build sites? And I get construction can be messy, but I feel like it's getting a little bit out of hand, and I've checked a couple other build sites within other neighborhoods. You know, you have a property, whether it's a reno or a flat, a brand-new parcel that's going to have a brand-new home construction. And I just feel like there's a lot of... I know building can be chaotic, but I also feel like build sites are left with materials and debris out on the front of the road. I feel like trucks are ruining landscaping that our city staff works hard to, you know, maintain. I just feel like if we could... I don't know if that's something that we do within code enforcement, or something that we reach out to SafeBuild out and say, like, you know, "They've got to keep these job sites," you know, I don't want to say impeccable, but somewhat in order, because, I mean, you have people that have their homes, that they take good care of, and there's a construction project right next door, and it's just a free-for-all, and I just don't feel like that's fair to some of the residents that are dealing with construction projects.
So, just call our office at extension 230, and they'll pass that along? Or you can always call me on my cellphone?
Okay. Because I know I sent you some of those pictures of people with just trash out in their front yard in Paradise. It's still there till this day. So, and that was about two and a half weeks ago.
We'll go into that again.
Can we do something in the permit process on specifically saying that they are not to be putting building materials in the right-of-way? Now, in the past two weeks, we had gravel, and then when it was investigated, the company had already left, and they had part of 115th actually blocked off on the artery going back to the fingers. Did you see that big gravel thing have to go around that? And then we had dirt dumped on the small end of 115th, just out in the street. Now, I know that's not right, and that's not legal, but we need to address some of these issues upfront, so that when that happens, they automatically get a fine because that the person pulled out permits, "I will not be putting on the roadway," blah, blah, blah. If not, it's a $500 or $1,000 penalty.
So, you're saying that there's a construction project where a pile of dirt was brought in and dropped into the city?
In the middle, yes.
I mean, it's like a slap in the face when it's in the middle of the road.
And there was gravel.
That's a violation that could already be addressed without...
But what I'm saying, though, it's after hours when some of this is happening, so you're not having... So, you know, Josh goes out and tells them, "Well, you need to get the gravel out of here." Well, the people that were putting in the pool didn't have the... Nobody there to get the gravel out of there. So, there's people that had to go around that for a day. We had a thing at night where I'm out with the police and stuff, watching it. I just think that somewhere along the line, we need to... The more that you can address upfront, and then just start slapping it on them and say, "Okay, we'll pull out city assets and take care of them," and... Or something.
You know, Kathy, I know you have a lot on your plate, and they're not complaints, and I just feel like, you know, there's a lot of volume that's going through, you know, the city in regards to construction projects. We all see that, whether it's a neighbor getting a pool, or, you know, Richard's neighbor building some monstrosity right next door to him, or even in Paradise Island, the things that I see. And I just feel like, because there's so much of it going on, it's very easy for a resident to complain, or mention, or say something about the cleanliness of a job site, or how it's impacting the others around them. And I just feel like it's very hard for us to control, and that's why I keep bringing it up in front of this board in regards to, you know, whether it's a contractor coming through, getting a permit, or the, you know, the subcontractors that are filed underneath that contractor. I just hope that we can, you know, press on them a little bit to be better, because, you know, we do care about the beautification of the city. We just want it done in the right way.
Right. But when you have things out in the road...
Oh, absolutely.
And the rain... I mean, it's going down. It's just like the blacktop situation around, that you've got people's asphalt driveways deteriorating. It rains. It goes into the gutter. Where does it go after it goes into the gutter? It goes out to the Boca Seaga.
Yeah.
And we're polluting that way, too. I mean, so there are things that we need to address and address upfront, and I'm hoping that we can address some of these in the land development regulations and stuff. But sometimes, the only thing people understand is if it hurts their pocket.
Yep.
So, in that instance, when we see a violator, and depending on what it is, there's severity of violations, right? So, let's take the easiest ones first. We give a courtesy notice. Tell them to do... Tell them to fix it, okay? If they don't fix it, then we give them a courtesy notice. But we have to give them enough time to actually fix it. So, depending on what it is, let's just say, tall grass, we give them three days to mow their lawn, or, you know, depending on who it is. But there's severity levels. So, in your instance, we need to know where that is, so call my office and let us know, because there's only nine of us, and only three of us go out into the field. So, you just have to call us and talk to us, because my inspector can't be everywhere at once. So, you have our phone numbers. I can give you my personal cell at a later date. And just... Not now. Just, you have to let me know, and then we will take care of it. So, and for the... We also have a stop-work order that we can impose, but that's Florida Building Code. We have a stop... Courtesy notice stop-work order for the land development code, although most of that's zoning. And we, the city, tries to work with people. We communicate with people. We meet with people face-to-face. We try not to do a lot of phone calls. We try and go out to the site, or they come here, so we can fix problems together. So, stop-work orders are a really valuable tool with the Florida Building Code and our building official and building inspector and Josh. So, you know, we write a lot of those. And then every time we write a stop-work order, we do report it to the county. So, no one's exempt from that. If you get a stop-work order, you're going to be reported to the county. And the county then can assess fines. And yes, then they can assess those big fines, depending on once they go to their special magistrate. Their special magistrate then authorizes a fine. So, on my end, we don't give fines, because we don't have anything in our code that authorizes us to do that. So, we rely on the county.
Okay.
So, if you're getting a stop-work order, you're going to get a call from the county.
And then the other... Sorry to keep going. Just one other thing is, if I could... In the next meeting, if I could get some clarification in regards to the trailer that is behind the Treasure Island Hotel and that whole setup, I just want to understand that a little bit better, because obviously, I wasn't here for that when that whole was approved. And now that that is approved, I just have a feeling that some other people that maybe own those golf-front commercial lots are going to start asking questions, or be coming in front of the board, and they're going to say, "Well, that was done down there. We want to do that." And I just feel like, if I could be on the front end a little bit more educated on how that took place, I would just find it beneficial for me as a board member.
I have that same question.
Because I'm...
I do, too.
I'm blown away that there is a trailer five feet off the boardwalk. Like, I just cannot believe that that took place.
So, I can speak to this a little bit. There is a strip of land that is between the trail and then the hotels that run along there.
Yes.
And that strip of land is actually still part of the public beach. It was... There was a lawsuit that happened back in the '60s. It's sometimes affectionately referred to as no man's land. And the lawsuit dealt with the construction of the trail, as well as the fact that that property was public beach for public bathing, as opposed to property for the hotelers or upland property owners. So, what the city has done is, in certain situations, they've entered into license agreements, where basically they're allowing the adjacent property owner to utilize that property for some sort of public amenity. Okay? And so, I believe that the Treasure Island Resort came in and asked for a license agreement with regard to that. When that hotel was originally destroyed, that was there, you'll also see... Let me back up one second. You'll also see there are cement pads behind a lot of them. Those pads were put in in the '60s by the hoteliers. And so, the lawsuit said, "Well, those pads can stay there, but they are public facilities." The hoteler, you know, if they want, can remove them. Otherwise, they stay there, and they're the hotelier's responsibility and liability, but they have to be open to the public. So, when the Treasure Island Resort was... The hotel prior to it was taken down. That concrete pad that was out there was also removed, and it was just left as beach. And then they came in and asked for a license agreement, asking for... There's a tiki bar that'll be out there. There will be lawn chairs that can be utilized, again, by the public. And then there is that trailer, which are actually public restrooms. So, because they're potentially serving food and drinks right there in that area, there need to be facilities for the public to be able to use, and so that's how that's going to operate. And they also have similar restriction to what you heard, talked about with the other bathroom trailers, where that trailer has quick hookups, and so that if there is an emergency, it has to be taken off the beach, and it has to be... And it'll be taken off the beach through the Treasure Island Resort's property. They actually constructed it that way, so that it can roll right off.
Yeah. No, I see that... I see that... Sorry. I see the construction process, and I understand that, okay, yeah, we're going to unhook it, unhook the power and water. You know, at the same time, we're going to build a catwalk that's permanent, that leads up to it. You know, I think that the applicants today brought... Got my mind thinking, because it's okay. One applicant says, you know, one applicant says that, you know, he had to put in that trailer that's been locked for five years or whatever. I don't believe the "it's broken" comment. But then, you know, the other applicant is trying to build something nice and, you know, that's foundation, but it obviously doesn't meet, you know, FEMA requirements, so we're telling him to take it down. Right on the beach, we're allowing a ma... You know, a trailer there, and it's like, of course, you want them to build something that, you know, doesn't look like that. I mean, there's already graffiti on one side of the trailer. So, I mean, there's just like one of those things where I'm just trying to learn a little bit better, and that's why I had brought it to the table. So, I appreciate your information, Jennifer.
Yeah.
So, how long is the license agreement for?
Until it's terminated. There isn't a specific term within the license agreement. It can be terminated by the city with a certain amount of notice that's given, and then they have a certain period in which to wind down their business affairs or make altercations to their upland property to be able to accommodate, you know, what was being done on the license area.
So, to this whole point of concern about maybe this idea expanding, are there other places along the beach where this type of licensing arrangement could take place?
So, it's very interesting that you ask. There are actually two right now, license agreements. But there is another hotel that's expressed an interest in having a license agreement, and they're actually coming before the commission at the next commission meeting to... It's just at the workshop, not at the meeting itself, just to seek kind of the commission's input on the improvements they're looking to do, whether or not that would be something that the commission would want to see out there on that public area, and also to discuss with the commission some of the license terms that have been traditionally included in some of our other licenses, or are... Or have recently been added to our concessionaire agreements, because we actually have several license agreements with concessionaires that provide paddle boards, or chairs, or other things along the public beach.
That's also a new category.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So, but then, it just gets me thinking, if... So, the bathroom... The mobile bathroom that is behind the Treasure Island Hotel today is part of a license agreement because there is food and beverage being served.
To the public.
To the public. Now, let's just say, in regards to the other beach properties that are there, I know you said that there's two, but technically, if everybody wanted a license, the Page Terrace, the Billmar, and they wanted that same type of arrangement, I mean, are we talking that they would have to put in a trailer? So, I mean, we could just have trailers lined up down the beach? And then if they come to us and say, "Well, you did it for them..."
That's what I'm...
Right.
"Why can't you do it for us?" Are we going to be in... And I guess, my main question is, any license agreements that involve development in those no man's land, do they come in front of here?
No. They go to commission.
They go to commission.
So, the commission determines what they want to see out there, and what amenities are needed for the public.
Great. Well, I'm actually happy to let them deal with it.
But just for clarification again, so it's the commission that makes this decision?
Mm-hmm.
And the length of time that these... It's within that license agreement, how long it... The, you know, the extension it goes for, and then there's so much time to wind down a business if the city decides we're not going to extend it or renew it, however that's done.
So, what I will tell you is, in some of these license agreements, there are two that exist now. that exist now, one that was done in 2001, that was with the Billmore and Sloppy Joe's, the deck out there. And then one that was done in 2015 with regard to the Treasure Island Resort. Those are the only two that exist so far. Those didn't have specific terms in it, like, you're starting on this day, and you're ending on this day. Instead, it was a license, you can continue to use it until we say you can't.
Okay. So it's open. Okay.
And so that's how it's been approached. Now, I will tell you, with our concessionaire agreements, they were that way, and we have kind of consistently gone through, and as they come up for amendments, we've changed those for their to-be terms. And they can be renewed, but there is a set term where it kind of comes back for that evaluation. And so that'll be something that the city commission is considering with this new license, is whether or not they want to include that as a term of the license, or they don't.
All very enlightening.
I mean, it is, because the trailer situ, again, I'm, I'm for the boardwalk getting some new bells and whistles, let's just say.
I like the tiki bar.
Yeah. Like, I'm okay, as everybody on this board knows, like, I'm all about growing Treasure Island, like, I want development, let's get this done. But one of the things, it's just interesting that we have the city of St. Pete with their concessions and their bathrooms from 1960 or whatever, that have never been refurbished. And it's just like, they, it's just an interesting scenario, that if they wanted to, if anyone wanted to build new bathrooms, they've got to do it up in the air. I understand that's FEMA, but the workaround is like, oh, we'll just slide a trailer in there, you know, that's, that's where my mindset was coming from. So I appreciate you guys putting up with me as I learn this crazy world that Kathy lives in every day.
Mind over, it's fun.
I do have a question going along with that. We walk to the beach every day, and we've been watching that and thinking, oh, is that trailer going to stay there? And now I understand why. And, you know, also with the parking lot and the discussion of the bathrooms, it kind of reinforced it. So as we were walking by, one of my co-walkers said, why, then, because I thought it was because it was in the zoning and everything, and they said, well, then why was Kathy's able to enlarge their bathroom? Is it because it's actually on their property, that they were allowed to enlarge it on the first floor?
That's correct. It was on their property.
Okay. Oh, and one other thing that we talked, we were talking about with, you know, reporting things to the code enforcement. I did want to say that I reported a problem with my neighbor to the code enforcement, and it's a great process. Josh was out there that day, he was very responsive, he gave me a lot of feedback. It was a good experience. And most of the mangoes are gone.
Okay. Anybody got anything else? With that, let's see, the next LPA meeting, as Kathy was saying earlier, will be October 14th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. And we're going to have a big meeting that day. And then our next P&amp;Z meeting will be Thursday, October 21st, at 2:00 PM. And do we have any cases that we know of for that one?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, wait, I take that back. I think we might. So Jamie's been out on vacation, so.
Things that do develop over the next month, so who knows? We might get some more cases. And with that, I think I've had enough. Let's have a motion to adjourn.
One second. Oh, Richard can't motion, so.
I'm moved that we adjourned the meeting.
A second.